Okay, I will call to order the Tuesday, August 18th, 2020 meeting of the Stoughton Select Board. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people who may gather in one place. This meeting being broadcast live by Stoughton Media Access Corporation is recorded for future broadcasts via the Internet and telephone. I'll do a quick roll call of board members. Ms. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Kaby? Mr. O'Regan?
Present.
And Mr. McRuskey was unable to attend the meeting tonight, so he had a work commitment and was unable to be on the call tonight. With that, I do have a flag over here myself for you all. Let's see if we can get this in the shot. Do the pledge of allegiance here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on our agenda tonight is citizens' requests. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute your phone for your Google Meet login, and I will recognize you. Looks like the first on my list who is unmuted is Mr. Lurie.
How you doing? Thank you, Christine, and the rest of the board. I just wanted to, oh, Dave Lurie, Precinct 6, 18 Robina Road. I thought it was an interesting conversation started either last week or the week before around the census, and I just, it's not a trivial point to discuss because we've seen, if you look at the annual report, as was mentioned, we're in about the range of 23,000 people, and what was said is that that's of the people who are actually filling it out, but not, you know, but a far cry from what's actually real, what's, you know, in terms of how many people actually live in the town. So there's a, there's a couple of problems with that. First of all, we operate, you know, those statistics mean something, and we get grant money, it comes down from the federal government, just at least a trillion, if not a trillion and a half, of monies that come down to the different municipalities throughout the country that's, that's based on the size of our town. So our 10-year cycle for the, for the federally, federally created census, I think, was pushed out to October 31st. Hopefully, we're going to reverse the trend, but I mean, if our town is in the habit of not doing their, their duties of filling out a census, then it doesn't really bode too well for how well we're going to do on the federal census, and that's going to have a huge impact on us. So, and on the other hand, if it's true that the numbers are dwindling, then we have another problem as well. So either we're not getting credit for the size of our town, if it's really above 27,000 people, then we're going to lose out, and our town is very dependent on those monies. Unfortunately, we depend on every source of, of revenue, and that's an important one. So I guess what I want to make sure everybody has to understand is that they need to fill out their census, or else it's going to impact the town negatively, and if it's true that we have less people, then that has an impact on our tax base. You know, who's going to pick up the tab on all of our, you know, about two and a half money, you know, to fund, to fund everything we do? So I don't, I just want to bring it up because it's not a trivial conversation at all, and it's, it's, and I think in the past week, I think they've been doing the door knocking. So if somebody comes knocking on your door, please fill out your census. It's going to have a deep impact on Stoughton, and I hope we have a good turnout on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lurie. Next I see here is Mark Zemanian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is through you to the town manager. I'm just curious as to if she has an update on the traffic issue on Pleasant Street and Turnpike Street?
No formal update. We continue to work with the police department on it, Mr. Zemanian, and seeing what we can do there. It's a challenge. They put it on roll call, and we're, we're on it. I just don't know if you're seeing any change or improvement.
Um, honestly, don't know. I've been away for a week and a half or so. So, yeah, I, I'll check it when I, you know, when I'm back in town permanently, but just didn't know if you had any formal updates as of yet.
Not formal. I know they were out there on Turnpike. They, they did several, I believe they did several stops and whatnot. So there's been enforcement out there. I don't have anything formal for you.
Okay.
But I do know they've had increased enforcement.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. Phone number ending in zero six. I believe that's Ms. Walsh?
Yes, Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I did get a copy of the agenda, and I don't see it on, this information on it. I think everyone knows when the primary is and that they can vote in person, and I know I got my absentee ballot already, and I mailed it back, but I'm interested in the early voting. I noticed in tonight's enterprise, the Town of Easton put in the detail about times and places, and I didn't know if the Board of Selectmen had that information, since it's supposed to start Saturday, so that folks who want to vote in person, but they want to do it before September 1st, know when and where they should be.
Sure, I can pull that up. I'm just navigating my computer right now. While I look this up, I'll, I'll provide the information when it gets to me on the Selectmen comments. Are there any additional citizens' requests or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to Select Board comments. Ms. Roberts, any comments?
Oh, yes. Through you, Madam Chair, I wanted to remind everyone, especially the board, the DLS Best Practice Session will be Thursday, August 27th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I requested questions to forward to the facilitators so they can prepare. They're already looking at Stoughton metrics, but if you have any specific questions, please send them to me so I can forward them to our facilitators at the DLS. So far, I have three questions for them outside of their typical best practice presentation. The, the next point I would like to add through you, Madam Chair, is our oversight of the financials. Now, typically in board situations on a monthly basis, we look at the financials to see where we are year-to-date as compared to the budget. So this has nothing to do with the budget development process. It has to do with, well, where are we? I'm on a team with Steve Kaby. We look at the expenses, but I don't look at the revenue. So, in your opinion, is there a need for a forecast, financial forecast subcommittee that's made up of several people so we can keep our eye on that and develop policies and the like, or maybe just a financial sheet that we can look at that gives comparisons of year-to-date compared to the budget? So I just wanted to know your thoughts, and I know it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to bring that up as, as a question, as an opportunity for us.
Yeah, we can definitely put it formally on the next agenda or subsequent agenda to discuss what that sort of need will look like, and if we need a committee or just a report. Just knowing kind of what I look at in my day job, we typically get up-to-date sort of revenue projections, and what's most helpful is a year-end sort of showing where the revenue came in as compared to the previous year or, you know, year-to-date comparisons to see if we're on track, because obviously different funding comes in at different times of the year depending on taxes and fees and so on. So I think all that information exists, and we can probably ask staff to do a drill down, you know, I can throw some templates out there that we can look at and discuss, and then consider if we need a, a subcommittee for it. I'm sure that's, that's pretty easy to put together.
That's great. Great news. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
I don't, yeah, I don't doubt that the finance team, Robbins, who has all the data and information, they probably look at it and know it by heart.
That's right.
Yeah, just even getting a bi-monthly or quarterly report would be helpful. I, I think the same thing. You know, sometimes I'm like, oh, where are we right now in terms of like hotel tax or whatever as compared to last year? That's, that helps inform kind of the upcoming budget cycle, too. So we can certainly put that on and...
Susan, Susan Herman pretty much provides those quarterly for us. The, the revenue taxes, such as the, the receipts and whatnot, are, are usually on a quarterly basis. We take a look at those.
Perfect. Okay. Thanks, Robin. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaby, any comments?
Just, we're probably all aware of is that there's a primary election coming up, September 1st, as, as has already been mentioned. Your, your, your vote is your voice, as Ms. Roberts has said, and I think that's a important words of wisdom. I agree with her entirely. This is your chance to, to impact the future of, of our community, of our districts, congressional districts, Senate districts, and, you know, there's, there's a number of other seats that are being, you know, that people are running for, Register of Probiety, for example, that, that, that have, can have a treasure, have a huge impact on the community, and our community as well. And, you know, it's important that we make thoughtful decisions about the people we want in those roles. So have the opportunity, get to know the candidates, that'd be great. I know that the League of Women Voters for Sharon and Stoughton has done a number of, of debates, and there's, there's information out there. There's probably not a lot of it in SMAC, at SMAC, but we've also seen on Facebook that, that there's, there's a lot of information available. Check websites wherever you need to. It's really critical that people get involved and, and, and take these elections seriously. So the September 1st, we're going to have early voting. We're also going to have absentee ballots and, you know, take advantage of, of those opportunities to vote safely. And those are my only comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaby. Mr. O'Regan?
Nothing, thank you.
And I, I did get that information on the early voting, as Mr. Kaby alluded to, and as the previous commenter had requested. So the early voting hours at Town Hall are, are going to be from Saturday, August 22nd through August 28th. The early voting hours for Saturday, August 22nd, and Sunday, August 23rd are 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday, August 24th through Wednesday, August 26th, the hours are 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thursday, August 27th, they're 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Friday, August 28th, it's 9:00 a.m. to noon. That voting will all take place on the First Warren Fitzpatrick Room, and the Clerk's Office just asks folks to please adhere to the health and safety regulations in place because of the COVID pandemic, social distancing, masks. So there, there may be a bit of, a little bit of a line if there's too many folks voting at one time, but just be assured that, you know, those, those are the hours, and if you attend, if you go to Town Hall, you can vote early at those times. So we'll make sure that everything's posted on the town website as well. Perhaps we can get a posting on the, the door of the Town Hall, so as people walk up, they can see when the hours are as well. And any questions, reach out to the town clerk. Their office will be able to answer anything. Any questions you might have. All right, and those are all my comments. So if there's nothing else on the board, I'll move on to the next item, which is Town Manager comments.
We have very little to update on. I am pleased we have close to 800 responses, though, to our survey for downtown. We're really excited about that. That's really a huge turnout on survey responses. We're very excited about that. I had a preliminary discussion with the group from DOR who will be presenting the best practices on the 27th, so we had a nice talk about current practices in Stoughton this week. So, and I also put them in touch with Sue Herman. They wanted some information on her five-year projections that she's done, her long-range projections. So they're in touch with Sue. They know Bill. They didn't know Sue. So we, we put them in touch with all of them, and I just gave them some general overviews of our budgeting process, a really positive discussion on that. So that was actually kind of affirming, which was nice. So that's always good. And so that's, that's pretty much it for me. We are moving along, and as I said, I'm really excited about the number of responses. That's exciting. We are also hoping to have the drive-in movie night set up very soon at the golf course. The only delay in that has been we're working with the police department because the concessionaire does serve alcohol, and we're talking about drive-in movies. So we just have to make sure that from a alcohol-serving standpoint with cars, there's been changes in the laws on that because of COVID and outdoor activities, but we're working with the police department. Matt Koshon is working with the police department on that. Also, just briefly, one little piece of good news, and the numbers aren't official. Golf course in July came in about $11,000 higher than it did last July, just in the month of July. So I just thought that was an interesting number Victor had put in front of me and, and really very encouraging number to see, and I think people are just starved for activities that they can do safely. You know, we, we were without rain, which is a problem for the next topic coming up with water, but a good topic when you're trying to make money on a golf course. And people seem to be enjoying the concessionaire. They've done tremendous work. We encourage them to check out the clubhouse. They have put a lot of money in. Obviously, not as full as we'd like it yet. Hopefully, we sooner, rather than later, will have some positive movement on our phases, though I don't see that happening quite yet with some of the restrictions the governor has, but we're really excited about what we're seeing down at the golf course. So just a little update on the good news night. It's a good news night.
Great. Thank you, Robin. That's it. And that was a pretty good segue into our next item, which is the temporary water restriction update. So just keeping in with, in track with what we were discussing previously, you know, we're, we're keeping an eye on the water restriction that we have in place right now. Right now, water use is restricted for even-numbered houses on the Tuesday before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. and for odd-numbered houses on the Thursday before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. So Phil McHalti, the Water Superintendent, sent over some updated use numbers through August, essentially. So the last update we got, I think, was a couple of weeks ago, and we had numbers through the end of July, and our use was at 2.4 million gallons per day. For the first week of August, we were at 2.2, and now this latest week in August, ending on the 10th, we're at 2.3. So as he indicated, we're holding pretty steady at that high rate of use. For comparison, in previous years, that number is around 2 or even as low as, you know, 1.5. So we're seeing still a substantial increase in the use. And I also circulated some information he provided from the state on the drought status. So the entire state of Massachusetts is in a level-two drought, and once that occurs, then there's a certain request that the DEP requires towns. So we're basically still in the same position, if not slightly worse than we were a few weeks ago. So I just wanted to give the board that information, and if there's any questions, we can get those over to Phil, and we can keep revisiting this as we go. I think his, his original recommendation to do this, at least to the end of August, is still, still consistent. So are there any questions from the board that we want to send to the Water Department or any discussion or action we want to take on this item?
I believe they're on it.
Mr. Kaby, did you have any comments?
I think that we're, we're heading in the right direction. My, my lawn looks, looks very sad right now, but, but, but it's good to know that, that we are, are being able to sort of reach our targets and not, not tax our system too, too much. And so, so I, there's no, no changes for right now that I'm, I'm interested in. I, I'm still very much paying attention to public sentiment, and as I reported the last time, so far, I have not had anybody who discussed this with me and asked that we, you know, turn on the NWR, water supply. You know, I've had, had some discussions about this that went down a different track, but, but with regard to what we're doing, I haven't heard any objection to it. And so long as the, the public feels comfortable with it, and I just want to make sure that people, bills don't explode, and they just suddenly get surprised with an astronomical bill, that's kind of my main, main goal here. But if it turns out everyone's perfectly fine with a huge bill, then, then by all means, so that's my...
Any other members of the board? I think, Mr. O'Regan, are you, I, I know you're muted again. I, I think your phone may have dropped off. I know you, I just want to make sure that we can hear you at least.
I disconnected the phone because I got my microphone working.
All right, great. Sure you were there.
Thank you.
All right, there's nothing further on this item. We can go on to the next item, which, right, it's the Town Clerk Office Evaluation Status Update. So I just put this on so that we could get a sense of where we were in that process, if we had. I know this board had previously voted to engage services to move forward with that evaluation, and I want to just get a sense of the status of that and that moving forward.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Kaby, you go first.
Sorry, I just wanted to update you on, on at least the first part, which is with regard to the, the contractor who's, who's going to be helping us out, consultant, I should say, who's going to be helping us out with the, with the human resource questions we have and, and fulfill the, the, the work that we described, described in our previous meeting. That has begun. It started yesterday, 8:17, and I think she's looking for, for about a week or two worth of work, if I remember correctly. But, yeah, she's working with, with the town manager to, to provide the, the information and access that she needs to, to be able to perform that for us. So we should be seeing some deliverables within the next week or two.
Dr. Graham?
Yeah, and to follow up on that, I am meeting with, with her tomorrow. So just to give her sort of a jump-off point, also the evaluation you asked of me is just about complete. I'm at a point now where I have pretty much everything done, except maybe just a section on suggestions and recommendations moving forward, but an overall analysis is complete of the, the general functioning of the department, and I will have that ready for you next week as well. But I think it's important that I also talk Mary Beth's commendations to you all. So once I speak with her, I'll be putting together my final thoughts and recommendations.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for the town manager or Mr. Kaby from members of the board? Seeing shaking heads, so, okay. All right, I appreciate the status update. I just wanted to put that on there, so get a sense of where we were, and looks like we'll be revisiting that in a week or two. Keep me apprised of which meeting to put that on based on the timeline of when it's complete.
Will do.
Thanks. All right, our next item is to open the warrant for the special town meeting. We were provided with some, some articles here, so I'll first ask the, I know we were given sort of a timeline here, and there's a reason we're doing this at this time. So if I could just ask the town manager to sort of give a high overview of the timeline, and then we can open the warrant and start with the articles that were provided to us and go from there, so.
So I apologize to you for how quickly this is getting thrown at you, but the timeline is extraordinarily rapid. What's happening is we have to, because there are budget articles on here, which we wouldn't necessarily normally have, but because there are some budget articles, according to Bill Rowe, it has to be done by November 15th. And because we have a presidential election and primary elections and everything else, just Clerk's Office, we knew we were going to have to do it on the early end. This isn't one because the budget articles, we can push to the end of November. We couldn't do this the first week of November with the presidential election going on. It would be impossible for the Clerk's Office, particularly with the mail-in that we're probably going to have coming in. So we, I believe it's October 19th, I think, is the date that we have. In order to do that, back it up, where people get the books two weeks ahead, we have the appropriate 40 days in between, the warrant really has to be closed by next week. So even if it's just a short meeting to do, we, we need to do that by next week. That way, we give FinCom, I think, a couple of weeks, FinCom and Intergovernment, and I know Mr. Mullins on, at least a few weeks to, to set up meetings about these articles. One thing I will say is virtually all of these articles, except for I think maybe three, are articles that you all saw before, and FinCom has already vetted them. So these meetings should be relatively easy, if you will. I mean, the capital, those are all identical. So we can go through the articles very quickly if you want, just to show you what we have on there. And then I know next week to close it, you probably have to finalize an order and, and vote, but I just figure we probably want to go through quickly. Most of these have motions that were already drafted, so we're not going to have a big issue with getting the motions actually drafted and the book, the book put together. I do want to thank Reggie. I threw this at her last minute and said, oh, my God, we've got to have it this week. So I apologize if it looks a little patched together, but she was scrambling to get there and go through the book with me to get what had gotten moved forward from Fall Town Meeting. So I don't know if you want to just run through the articles quickly?
Yeah, let's, if, if anyone's comfortable making a motion to open the warrant, we can start there and then, and then work our way through these, these draft articles just as a preliminary discussion.
Make a motion to open the, the special town meeting warrant?
Second. Motion made in second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well, I, I think, Madam Chair, the, it should be, I can suggest a motion to open a warrant for a special town meeting to be held on a date. The, the countback is 42 days from the special town meeting. There's a minimum seven days for the warrant to be opened. So I was trying to do the math backwards myself. We might have until September 1st or that week to actually close the warrant, for a town meeting to happen on, on October 19th. But if I can suggest, the form of the motion would be for, to open a warrant for a special town meeting to occur on whatever the date would be. And then the next question would be when the warrant closes, with minimum seven days for the public to submit requests.
Okay, so town meeting, we're looking to have a special town meeting October 19th?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I appreciate it. I appreciate it, Mr. Regan. So I'll make a motion to open the warrant for a special town meeting to take place on October nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Second. And Dr. Graham, you explained that the nineteenth is the date that works in order to ensure that the budget articles can comply and everything can get in order for that November fifteenth deadline. There's no later of a time that we could have a special town meeting.
We might be able to back it up a week, but now we're going to be having a town meeting a week before presidential election. And I'm very concerned if we put it right after the presidential election with mail-in ballots coming in and whatever kind of counting we may have to do of absentees, that it could be very challenging to the clerk's office and really put them in an unfair situation. You didn't start this process in July. I just want to clarify that town meeting didn't end until June thirtieth or twenty ninth. We have to wrap up after that. And we started this process three weeks ago at the end of July. And yes, it did take us two or three weeks to get ready to start a new town meeting. So I did receive a question on the chat as to why we didn't do this sooner. Logistically, there are other things that also go on in town. I'm not trying to make excuses, but the reality is to have, to be starting a town meeting three weeks or four weeks after the completion of a town meeting. But it literally could not be done sooner than this. And so I apologize, I know Mr. Mullin puts a lot of pressure on the moderator and we don't know where. We also don't know the format of this meeting still. I mean, that's our next thing to sit down and do, we have no idea what October is going to bring.
Yeah, I guess my follow-up question before I'm prepared to vote on this motion. Do we have all of the appropriate budget numbers and information, at least from the state, in order to be ready for the nineteenth?
At this point, you know, we're hearing that, what we're getting is that there will be increase in chapter seventy money. Our chapter ninety money is holding solid. It's about what it was last year at level funding, less the, we got a little extra bonus eighty thousand at the end last year of some surplus that they had. But basically, we're coming into chapter ninety level funded. Chapter seventy appears to have an increase. So I think that we're comfortable with that. We've got the two point five million in cares money coming in. We worked with the, sit down with the, virtual sit down with the school department, Dr. Marcus, his finance team, myself and my finance team, on how we would work through the cares money and prioritize and share that money as one town, which was a big thing today, very amicable meeting on that, which I think is critical. So we have funding sources such as that. The Commonwealth is operating basically off sort of quarterly numbers now. They're doing a couple of months at a time. And so we just have to continue to move forward at this point as best as we can. If we push it out later, Bill is concerned if we don't have it with the certified numbers by November fifteenth, we really can't do them. Whereas other Fall Town Meetings have not had budget articles. And I know Bill's not on, but he is, he's really the one who understands that in depth, the reason that we have to move up. I mean, look, if you want to hold, I understand. It's just that with some of the budget articles, it could be tricky.
As a kind of follow up to that, I guess, a worst case scenario would be to review budget-related articles at the October special. And then if needed, have another special.
I lost the back of that.
Sorry, I said if we had the October special to review the budget-related articles and get those squared away for November fifteenth, we could, in theory, have another special to square away any borrowing articles or anything funded by free cash or whatever it may be. I know that would be unprecedented, but nothing about this year is normal, so.
Right now, not, everything's unprecedented, so I'm game for anything. I just, you know, my contracts, we could push off, those can always get pushed off a little bit. I mean, we did those last year after the closing of books. I think a lot of it comes down to some of the free cash things on the capital purchases and whatnot, which are the ones he's the most concerned about. I'm not sure how much longer I can delay on some of these purchases. We've pulled some, even some from the list. We didn't push everything.
Okay, is there any additional discussion for members of the board on the motion to open the special town meeting warrant? Or the warrant for the special town meeting to occur on October nineteenth?
I have a question, if I may, for the moderator. If he's, if he's, Mr. Mullin is here.
I am here, Mr. Regan.
How are you?
Very good, how about yourself?
Good, thank you. I'm sensitive and I'm sure you are for the logistics and time commitment for committee members to go through what needs to be done for October nineteenth. And so I wonder for some of the items that are likely to be on the warrant, such as capital items, budget items and other things, if you would be amenable to the board or the manager forwarding those draft articles for the committees to begin their work. So that if we don't close the warrant until next week, or say it's September first, we, that puts a real-time bind on those committees who would normally have more time for the annual, since the annual town meeting review period for the standing committees is much longer than the forty-two days. Now, I know there was some time before COVID hit, but COVID pretty much shut everybody down beginning of March. I don't know how much headway the standing committees had. Is that feasible to forward likely insertions for the committees to begin their work before the warrant closes?
Well, let me just say, I just got this email last week. And I was away, I just came back actually late, early this evening from out of state. But I did, was able to read this email that came out last week regarding the special town meeting. I guess a big concern is, how many articles are we talking about? Nobody has suggested a number yet. What's the amount of articles we're talking about? I haven't seen a draft warrant or anything. Can anybody comment on that?
It looks to be about fifteen. Yeah, between ten and fifteen, several of these are collective bargaining agreements.
So fifteen will be the max?
Looks like, I'm just doing a quick scroll through the draft I have.
And if I might, Mr. Mullin, I think only one, two, I think only three of them are new. Three or four of them are new.
I understand, Dr. Graham, but I think the standing committees probably want to take a fresh look at all the articles. I wouldn't want to speak for the standing committees because it's their job to kind of look through these articles again. I mean, I see the timeline, we'll try to stick to the timeline. First thing is I have to call a, obviously, as you know, a rules committee together so they can sign the articles. That's always the beginning of the process. So to go back to Mr. Regan's question, we'll try to, you know, we'll just try to get it all done. Get the hearings, you know, everything has to be advertised with the timely manner and get through the schedule. I don't know which, I haven't even seen the warrant, that's the only thing that troubles me right now. So to answer your question, I mean, it's still hypothetical to me. I mean, we probably could get this schedule through if all the standing committees, you know, if they do meet. Sometimes, as you know, some of the standing committees don't have, you know, the quorums. FinCom always meets.
And that's part of what I wanted to begin addressing is if we, if we know, which we, you know, which we pretty much do now, that there will be a warrant that will be finalized next week or the week after, that giving a heads up to the committee members so they can schedule. Some of the issues in the past has been just logistics of getting notice out to the committee members so they can assemble. And all of those logistical issues can be dealt with. So in the ideal world we don't live in, we vote to close the warrant, say, on a Tuesday. Or even if we were to meet on Monday, the first, then the notices of the public hearings would go out on, say, Tuesday. And I don't recall what the minimum notice period is, but if these ducks can be lined up, then it takes some of the time pressure in the backend of the schedule to get the book out and to get the information out to town meeting members. That's all I was hoping we could start.
Yeah, I mean, definitely. I mean, I'll obviously work with the select board and town manager. I think we can all work this out. I just need to get a draft copy of the warrant as soon as possible. That's the warrant.
Yeah, we had, we were scrambling with the last few days for the one or two new articles that came in. I was all over my directors to try to get those in. And it's just been, you know, everybody's just, it's chaos right now. My original goal to get this document to you guys for next week's board meeting. And then when we started doing the countdown, it basically gave FinCom less than two weeks realistically to do it. And I know that just wasn't going to be fair to them. So this is why the rush for this week, instead of waiting for me to get this to you next week, giving us another week. So I apologize, it's just, I just don't know any other way to do this without it being on a time crunch.
What I'll do is tomorrow morning, I'll email the chair people of each committee, let them give them a heads up if they're not watching tonight. Start there. And I want to work with the chair people, men and women, to schedule their meetings. I don't want to just tell them we're scheduling, you know, working with them to schedule the meetings.
And realistically, if they can, I was going to say, if they could do them jointly, realistically, it would just probably be easier for everybody.
Although the articles that you can have the same, yes, I mean, we generally do that, at least they've done in the past. I agree with you, Dr. Graham. Yeah, so right away, first thing in the morning, I'll send out the email. See if we can coordinate some meetings. But the biggest thing is, if you don't close the warrant until next week, we might not see all the articles yet, until next week or the following week, right?
But at least it's a good predict, I mean, it's fairly, fairly, you know, certain that there'll be assignments to FinCom, probably, you know, municipal operations, municipal regulations. Those are the main committees that need to consider most of the warrant articles. And so hopefully, knowing this is coming, those chairs could arrange the meetings and, you know, ascertain that we've got quorums. We don't have, we don't have the leeway we do with an annual town meeting to reconvene the committee meetings. And then for some of the articles, depending on if they're borrowings or the like, we don't want to run into problems with bond counsel and certifying the steps were taken prior to a vote. I'm just looking ahead at how, you know, how many dominos can fall in the right row and that would be one of them. Thank you.
Okay, no, fair enough. I'll, you know, contact the chair people tomorrow and see where we go from there. We'll try to get, at least notify them all to get moving on this. Okay?
Any additional discussion on the motion from members of the board? Hearing or seeing any. So on the motion to open the warrant for the special town meeting to occur on October nineteenth, made by Mr. Kavy and the second name of Ms. Roberts. All right, on the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes four to zero. So Dr. Graham, if you want to just quickly go through the draft articles that you sent over?
Yes.
Get a sense of those, I think will be helpful for this level setting of the conversation.
So the first several, as you indicated, are the remainder of our union contracts. There's a good shot, at least two or three of these may be ready, we're hopeful. So that's dispatches union, police patrol union, S P A, the second page, police superior officers, and S A. Then there's an article on supplemental fiscal year twenty-one departmental budgets. This is just the transfer money, these are sort of the pro forma ones that Bill Rowe asked to have put in. And also unpaid bills. We may or may not have any at that point, but we have to put them in there as a placeholder, just in case. Then capital equipment purchases, one correction, the school department is holding off on that security. One letter D, they're holding on that. I pulled out the two pool cars, we're going to put those off to the spring. So we still have narrowed this down to what we believe is critical capital. There are no new additional items there, nothing is new there.
Could you just run down that list?
Sure. Three unmarked cruisers, three marked cruisers, one unmarked. The two staff vehicles for the fire chief, the vehicle brush truck, that's to put out fires, literally, and brush and whatnot. We don't have one, we have something patched together, literally. Radios and communications device, personal protective gear and diagnostic equipment. Some of that was coming out of free cash. We will be sitting down with Bill Rowe to get a good handle again on where all that's coming from. Then Department of Public Works, the pickup truck with a plow, that's just to keep maintaining our fleet. The salt brine machine, medium-duty dump truck and plow, and the sanitation vehicle for the large truck repairs for our trash trucks. And again, letter D is eliminated. The next article, the next large article there is the facilities. This we had narrowed significantly before. And Paul put this back in now as it is. We may even go through and try to cut some of those again if we can, just to keep this as easy as possible. But for now, it's on there. Some repair and repainting of the council on aging and the sinks and fixtures there. New flooring at the D P W, that's actually pretty major. Stormwater upgrades. We did pull off things like paving at D P W, we have reduced this significantly. A stormwater upgrade, then, oh, we did put the, excuse me, we did put it back in, the mill and overlay at the parking lot, that was a big one. Upgrade HVAC and scrape and repaint garage door and controls. D P W needs a pretty big overhaul, we put this off from the spring. But that mill and overlay one, we were concerned, if I recall, about damage to our trucks, it's so bad over there right now. Repaving around Fire Station Two and then several town hall upgrades and modifications. Some of those, I think, are C P C potentially funded. So again, we'll get you all the funding source breakdowns on those. Then the Water Master Plan, this was something that Tom had requested in the spring. But again, we held off just because it could wait a couple of months. Then the fixed meter reader system upgrades, these are for residential meters. We had started with the commercial meters. We're starting to see savings on those. We can get you the numbers specifically on the savings. We had started to provide those for FinCom in the spring. I think pre-COVID, we were actually beginning to get them those numbers. And it was a little bit hard to gather because they were businesses and everything shut down. So our numbers weren't exactly going to be reflective of what normal, hopefully not COVID life will be again. We can hope. But these are to move on to the residential, and there's a belief that we will capture significant lost revenue. The bylaw amendment on short-term rental registration, this was our effort to deal with the Airbnbs that are going on in the community. And we're going to start, as we start to look at zoning for those and zoning questions on those, because we're having people do basically evening house parties in neighborhoods now and calling it Airbnb, if you will, and they, you know, they rent the house out for, I see select room of Robbins looking. And it's a problem, we're finding people are renting a house for a night and they're calling it like B and B. And they're having massive parties and the police are actually having major issues. There are a lot of people from outside of Stoughton coming in. And so we're looking to start with a short-term rental registration process. And that will eventually lead us to some zoning on that. We put that back in, if we have to wait till the spring, because that could be sort of a more complicated, in-depth discussion, we could wait till spring on that. But we did put it back in as something we think is a first step toward getting a handle on this. Then the four point nine five acre property on West Street, that's on there. We're obviously going to discuss that more in executive session tonight. It is on there as a placeholder in the event that we forward on that, that's the conservation land. Site plan bylaw modification, this is something that John had put forward. We held on it for spring, but it's the exact same article that he had put forward for the spring. That is several pages of the warrant there. And it's hard to see it, but at the end of that, and this goes on, I don't know if it's a page numbered, unfortunately. But there's a whole series of pages on that. And this was really to facilitate the site plan review process. We basically had the same process for a deck that you might have for a four-story building. And this was to facilitate this process for small projects. There were easier ways to do it, keep it still public, but make the process much easier, depending on the size and scope of the project. That's what this was all about, creating a true site plan operation out of the planning department. And he basically designed that for us with Mark. And then there's an article sort of at the very end of that, Cedar Hill Golf Course, this is a new one. Victor came to me asking for sixty thousand dollars for a new green sprayer. The current one we have is an OSHA nightmare waiting to happen. It's, I shouldn't even say that publicly. The current one we have is an OSHA nightmare waiting to happen. It's, I shouldn't even say that publicly, but it's the truth. It's patched together. It's, you know, this is to spray chemicals and whatnot. And, and the nozzles don't work properly. They're not spraying evenly. He's fixing it as he goes and doing his best, but it really warrants the $60,000 investment. I've been very, very hesitant to add anything right now. But for operations of the golf course, this one is critical. And as I said, we really are just seeing so much activity at the course that I thought it was worth putting it on there. Glen Echo Recreational Facilities, we had gone out to bid for this. We got great bids back, but they were all slightly over the amount. And so this is just back on here. It's sort of a rehash of another one, but with a slight increase in the, in the numbers. And then that Water Master Plan is a repeat. That just is a cut and paste on that. Pratt's Court Replacement, these are the Pratt's Court wells and Muddy Pond Utility Poll easement. You all know you did a Muddy Pond Utility Poll. We needed to put that easement on there. Pratt's Court Well Group Replacement, those are new. And then finally, we have one for Hexagon, Heron Crossing Solar. If you recall, we'd had a pilot agreement that the town had voted to support. And now the final numbers of the pilot have to be put in front of town meeting officially. That was the Hexagon Solar Project. So that's the list of them. The vast majority are repeats. Pratt's Well is, I think, new. Glen Echo was a repeat of an old one that we had to bring back. And then Victor's is probably the, the most sort of out of the blue one, but we put it in there because I, it's one of those emergency ones that popped up. And that's it.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that the draft article as described by the, by the manager be referred to the moderator with an indication that these articles are likely to be inserted by the board when the warrant closes.
Second.
On the motion and the second, any additional discussion from members of the board? Hearing none on Mr. Oregan's motion. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Madam Chair, I move that the warrant remain open until 4:30 PM on Tuesday, August 25th. And that all requests for inserted articles and all petitions be due in the office of the Board of Selectmen by that date and time.
Second.
On the motion made and seconded. Warrant open until 4:30 PM on Tuesday, August 25th. 4:30, Mr. Oregan?
Yeah, that's when the doors close in the building. Maybe, let me, if I may amend that to 4:00 PM. If that would be accepted, just so we don't have people racing in when the doors are closed.
Will that allow us to meet our seven-day requirement?
Well, the first day is tomorrow and the seventh day will be Tuesday. Unless, unless the board will be inclined to meet and have, and have the meeting to close the warrant on September 1st, that's a Monday, that, that is my counting, is probably the last best day we would have to close the warrant. If we forwarded what we've got now with preliminary suggestion to the moderator, hopefully that'll give the committees a heads up, but.
First is actually a Tuesday. It's primary day.
Well, we're not supposed to meet on elections.
We're not supposed to or we aren't allowed to?
We're not supposed to.
Okay.
But we've done it.
Madam Chair, could I say Bob Mullin?
Go ahead, Mr. Mullin.
I just think if you close the warrant after October 20, excuse me, after August 25th, it could be some logistical problems getting things into the, you know, advertising and things into the, you know, we have to, you know, it's always been you advertise the particular articles in, you know, this case, suburban shopper, you know, before the meetings. So if you're talking, I'm just trying to meet this, you know, very tight schedule here. If you're going to do beyond October, excuse me, I keep saying October. If you're going to do beyond August 25th, then it's going to be a challenge, very tough challenge to meet.
Absolutely. Mr. Mullin's right. The advertising is going to be very challenging this year.
It'll be tight.
Madam Chair, I think we need, I hear two concerns. One is that there'll be no question of the seven days when the warrant is open. We've tried to do that by having the warrant open seven to 10 days, not to close on the, on the seventh day. And, and perhaps if the board would consider it, we would have a special meeting on Wednesday of that week solely to consider and close the warrant. And that would clearly get us over the seven-day counting. Board is inclined, I'll amend my motion to that effect.
I'm still fine with seven days. I've got no objections to that. We try to get by, by the 25th, August 25th, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind the, the 25th. I don't see much of distinction between, between 25th and 26th. We are having a special meeting on the 27th, the DLS training, so.
Well, we can add this to the agenda.
I don't know, DLR, attend to that meeting.
Then I'll, then I'll leave it as it is and just ask if I may, I'll amend the motion to cut off time before 4:00 PM so that they're not being submitted as the doors are being closed.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask a quick question on that. This is Johnny Zavino, precinct four. Technically, you opened this warrant tonight. So if you have to go seven days, do you not have to go at least until the time that you open the warrant to make it seven days?
And that was, Madam Chair, that was one of the questions I was hoping to avoid by saying we go through Wednesday.
Yeah, because that was my question.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
What counts as a full day?
Well, town hall is not currently open. I mean, these have to be submitted to the clerk's office. So the, the hours that the clerk's office is open would, would have to be, you know, how we count this. And that starts tomorrow at, what, 8 o'clock, 8:30? That would be the start of it. And then close on, on Tuesday would be the end of it.
Yeah, but that would not be seven days. Seven days is, you know, seven, 24 hours. Then we're actually looking at probably the 27th to avoid any question. So in theory, we could start our meeting on the 27th at, you know, 6:00 PM and close everything out before our meeting with DLS. I'm not sure how this.
Having already indicated a presumption on those prior articles, what we have to comb through might be, might be less on that night. I think, I think discretion is better here. A mistake will, will be, or even a challenge we'll make going through October, highly problematic. And that's to be avoided. I withdraw my motion. I make a new motion to have the warrant for the special town meeting open through 5:00 PM on Thursday, August 27th for submission of all requests to insert and petition articles to the office of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, I'll second that as well.
All right. Any additional discussion on this motion? Hearing none on the motion to make the warrant open until 5:00 PM on Thursday, August 27th for all requests and insertion of petition articles to the board. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I apologize again. I just wish there was a better way to do this time-wise. I, I, there's just been no better way around.
Fair enough. And Dr. Grimm, have all of the departments, the school department, everyone been contacted regarding the special? They, if they have any articles that they want to get in, they're aware? If you can just, I guess, relay the timeline, we'll close for those.
Yes. Yes. I haven't reached out to all the boards with commissions, but our departments are aware and school department is aware, yes. But I'll zap out stuff to all the boards and commissions.
And we'll probably want to add this to the town calendar and town website so that folks can see it and they're starting to get prepared. Mr. Mullin, if you want to kind of work, begin our kind of conversations about figuring out how, how exactly the town meeting will run, we may want to put together on that in the coming weeks.
I will. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions here. Who should committees send requests to? And will there be early voting in October for the November election? Will that cause problems with the special town meeting? So in terms of committees should send requests, you can either send them to the board directly or to the town manager. That's the best process for that. And I'm not sure on the, the early voting for the November election and how that will be handled with special town meeting. I think, you know, obviously it's going to be a bit of a lift for the clerk's office. This is not the easiest time of year, so with the two elections and the meeting. But that is, hopefully we'll have the appropriate staff. As Dr. Grimm explained, this is a tight timeline, but I think she's forced to have staff prepared to handle that. Is there any other comment from the members of the board on this item? Be prepared to review this next weekend, so. Item number eight is the remap application. This was mentioned a few weeks ago. Select Board of Robbins and myself attended a webinar that was put on by the Metropolitan Area Planning Practical, NAPC. NAPC is the regional planning agency for 101 cities and towns in the greater Boston area. Member of NAPC by deficit. So when these types of opportunities come up, they reach out to the community to allow us to apply for grants and technical assistance they may be offered. So they put out this program called Remap Program, the Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan. So this is a grant opportunity that's being provided by, through a partnership with the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston and the Government Alliance on Race and Equality, GARE, as well as NAPC. And so Ms. Roberts and I attended the webinar and essentially what's being offered is technical assistance. So basically staff support from GARE and NAPC to conduct a planning and sort of operationalizing plan to address racial inequalities or racial inequities that are identified in municipalities. So the municipality basically has a lot of leeway to put a proposal forward before NAPC to get this technical assistance. They want to award three to four communities to implement their plan and it takes place over the course of a year. So we were fortunate enough to attend the webinar and kind of put our heads together to discuss what an application for Stoughton would look like. So turn over to Ms. Roberts if you want to sort of dive into the approach here. But what we're asking the board tonight is to authorize us to submit an application and then if possible, authorize us to submit a letter of support for the application on behalf of the board. Roberts?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. This is a great opportunity at a time when there's interest and support. We're always talking about moving Stoughton forward. Here's a great opportunity to do it. This is a 12-month grant. Therefore, there's a timeline to help us stay on task. Also, we'll utilize the U.S. federal census with the representative and demographics to help with the community outreach and information. We have town manager Robin's support. We have staff support. We have community support. We're asking you to okay the submission of the application. The purpose will be a two-pronged approach. One, we're looking at policies related to hiring, training and procurement. And two, we're looking at the demographics of the town to increase voting, as an example. We like your okay, your approval for the application submission and to submit a letter of support. Application is due Thursday, August 20th. Therefore, it's a quick turnaround time. The wardees will be notified September 3rd. What this grant is, is an opportunity. It's a technical assistance. They help us with media organizing meetings. They help us with training. They help us with research. We will use the technical assistance and our in-kind staff time to implement the two-pronged approach. The, once again, the grant is technical assistance and there is an in-kind staff match at the local level. Three to five communities within the New England area will be awarded the grant. We're required to have a core team of no more than 12 people. The core team has to be diverse. It has to be made up of town staff, people from the Select Board and community organizations. So maybe four people from each of those four categories would make a good core team. If we are successful in getting the grant, we'll require to devote time and hours. Now here's the time commitment. It's one to four months of phase one. Phase one, and that's 75 hours. And then months five through 12 is phase two. That's 150 hours. In phase one, we will be handling the planning, that's the development of goals, action steps, and in phase two is the execution, creating the Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan. Today, we had a focus group made up of the community people. And, and that was in preparation for the grant application, you know, to answer the questions on the application. We asked them about their challenges and barriers to participate in local government. That's on board and committee. So once again, we're asking two things. One is you're okay to submit the application. And number two, to write a letter of support in this effort.
So basically, when Deborah and I started discussing this, you know, we, we went off on all kinds of tangents because the grant is actually pretty broad. It covers everything from, you know, economic development to municipal government, to housing, transportation, you name it. And what we ended up sort of coming to the conclusion was that there's a lot that, a lot of the decision-making that happens in the town starts with our boards and committees, our town meeting representatives and even our staff. So what we wanted to look at was sort of testing this hypothesis we had that the representation maybe doesn't reflect the community at large. So we figured that this grant was a great opportunity to sort of gather that data and determine, are there barriers to entry for folks to participate in our local government? Are there, are there areas where we can improve in our outreach and our engagement? Is there a way that we can ensure that we're hearing all the voices and that everybody has equal access and opportunity to participate? And as we're doing things like, for example, the downtown zoning rewrite, you know, it's, we're putting a survey out and it's getting amazing response. So we just want to make sure that when we do things like that, it's actually reaching everyone. I'll just mute your phones here. So when we do something like put a survey out for the public, we want to make sure that we're, everybody has sort of the ability to access it and provide input, you know? So that may look like putting out multiple languages, putting out multiple formats. So that may look like putting out multiple languages, putting out multiple formats, where we distribute it, where we advertise it. So before we can sort of make assumptions that we have gaps and barriers, we need to do the sort of planning process, that one to four months, the initial grant. To look at that and gather that data and say, what are the gaps and barriers that we, we have in town for participation? And then in phase two, as Ms. Roberts explained, that will be, what are the action steps we can take to improve or break down these barriers and gaps? So this will all be done through sort of a racial equity lens, but with the main goal of really just ultimately improving participation. And for the makeup and representation of our, of our local government. And then any ways that we can incorporate that into our municipal government operationally in terms of, you know, hiring best practices or any trainings that could be offered. Things like that, that we could implement. Obviously, there's no hard dollar fund from this grant. So that will be a bit limiting in terms of what we can exactly do, but it might result in a few action steps that could be taken for a town meeting to approve an article to maybe implement some of the, the action steps that this grant would ultimately come up with as, as outcomes. That, I will turn it over to other board members for any questions on, on the remap application comments.
Yeah, I'll just make one comment. It's really just to, to, you know, extend my gratitude to, to both you, Ms. Howe and Ms. Roberts for, for taking this on. I think this is extremely important for our community, for all communities. And I really appreciate you putting the time in. Thank you.
What he said, I agree. Do you need a motion, Madam Chair, or how do you want to proceed?
Yeah, ideally, I think two motions. One, to submit the application and the other, if the board would authorize myself and Mr. Roberts to submit a letter of support to accompany the application.
And who submits the application, the manager or the board or?
The manager can submit.
So I'll make a motion to authorize and direct the manager to submit the remap application as proposed by Ms. Roberts.
Second.
On the motion made by Mr. Regan, second to Mr. Cavie, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Cavie?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Madam Chair, I move that the board authorize and direct you as chair and Ms. Roberts to send a letter of support for the application to remap to be submitted by the town manager.
Second.
Motion. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavie?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
I vote yes. And like I said, we're, we've reached out to a number of groups. As Ms. Roberts indicated, some community organizations, there was two focus groups tonight. So if there's any additional input that folks want to provide, please reach out to us. The application is due on Thursday, but as we stated, the, the awards wouldn't be made until September. And then the planning process takes course over four months. So there's plenty of opportunity to get citizens involved into other organizations and groups involved. So we're anticipating a very inclusionary planning process for this. And hopefully we'll, we'll be able to put together a strong application and get awarded and report back with some good news maybe in mid-September. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion on the Train Depot Activation and Use Plan. So I put this on here because you can sort of, there's a little bit of work that's been going on at the Train Depot. As this board may recall, we, we had a request for information that went out, I believe it was a year ago or so, after we closed on the depot to figure out if there's interest in uses on the site. And so I wanted to start this conversation so we can begin figuring out what we would want. Sort of the potential uses of the Train Depot to look like, what kind of items we'd want to include. And maybe even establish sort of a timeline for when we'd start to really hold ourselves accountable to ensure that the space is activated. I know that when this was purchased, the community was eager to see something go on in that space. In particular, Pam McCarthy, the Economic Development Director, has done a number of downtown studies, not only involving this site, but the downtown as a whole. And so we have a lot of input from the community as to what we want to see in that space. And so now we need to sort of collate that information and put it together into a package so that if we do solicit for a tenant of sorts or permanent tenant, sale, lease, you name it, then we can at least have a sense of the direction we're going. At this point, we haven't quite nailed that down. So I think this conversation is at least the starting point for figuring out what we want to do with the Train Depot to activate it as soon as possible and not continue to have it sit unused. Or at least plan for when sort of the shoring up of the building is complete, we can turn around and get that space usable in the community.
Madam Chair, I'd like to start that off with a motion to. Request a warrant article be drafted and an application be drafted and submitted to the CPC to repurpose funds previously appropriated for acquisition. To be applied toward a restoration and renovation costs of the depot.
Second.
On the motion to repurpose the previously appropriated funds. My submission of a warrant article that's to be drafted and submitted to CPC. Is there any discussion on this?
Just for members of the public and other board members who may be. Maybe watching. I believe in 2015, town meeting appropriated, made two separate appropriations for the depot. One was a sum to acquire the depot. And the second was for restoration of the building. We were able to acquire the depot for substantially less than the appropriation. Those funds are not available for restoration, although the cost of restoration which we've received will exceed the $350,000, which is my recollection of what was appropriated. And so in order to have that repurposed, we would need to submit an application for the Community Preservation Committee to make that recommendation. The town meeting, my hope is that if the CPC and town meeting were willing to appropriate that money, all of it for moving the depot back into good standing in the town. That, that meant we were able to get it for less than the anticipated purchase price. We would be able to shift the savings into needed restoration money.
Do we know when the CPC is meeting? We can draft that article for the warrant and then they can meet on it after. Sure that the timing wouldn't, we wouldn't be hamstrung by any timing here.
I, I haven't seen a posting date yet for the CP, for their committee meeting, if they're having one in early September. But hopefully this could be drafted and submitted with sufficient time so that they can take it up and hopefully approve it in September so that that streamlines for an October 19th town meeting. And unless we try, we can't succeed.
Any other comments from members of the board on this? Hearing none on the motion made by Mr. Regan. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavie?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
I vote yes. I will work with, work with staff to get that language all sorted out so that we can get that before CPC.
Madam Chair, the next issue is what do we do with the building? The results of the several, we, this has been discussed and debated, including a full night of public hearing before the Board of Selectmen. Some coordination with the Economic Development Director in the use study for the Randolph Savings Bank site. Community forums for the master plan, I could go on. What's clear from the information the board has received is that the desire the town is, and the best interest in using the depot building to bring back Stoughton Center is to put it to a commercial use. We don't yet know between the renovations that are needed, what we need to make it attractive for commercial use. And what kind of a deal we would want to strike, if I can put it that way, either by putting it out for an RFP. Or even negotiating finally with a successful bidder. So I think an appropriate fair next step would be to ask staff to provide us with an estimate of what it would cost to get a skilled professional to consult with us. On the contours of what a building, where, the level of repair and renovation we should shoot for to make it attractive for the next commercial use. My own opinion is that it's not attractive for commercial use now because it's a mess and it can't be occupied. There is some point where a potential acquirer, either by long-term lease or purchase, can take advantage of historic credits and restoration of a building credits, which we've been told would apply to both buildings, make it economical. We need to find that sweet spot. And we need to find someone who knows how to calculate that sweet spot. And I think that's the, I think that's the next step and, and for staff to give us recommendations on where that resource is and what it would cost us.
Dr. Grim, it's you.
I do have, I do have Fran Brutini on the meeting tonight. I believe Fran is here, so she would obviously be part of pulling this together. And I just want to open it up for her if she has some questions here for clarification as we move forward. I know she's out there.
I mean, is this typical for towns to hires? It almost sounds like a commercial broker is almost what you're describing when you're doing like a site search for private entities. Is this something other communities have done with their spaces or do they typically just put the RFP out and hope for the best? I mean, you know, I, I hate to spend so perfluous money when we've done studies and have indications of what could go on the site. But I also don't want to be on a sort of dead-end RFP process. We're putting proposals, requests for proposals out and getting no, no response or inadequate response.
And Madam Chair, we don't know what the commercial market is looking for in, in order to see that building as an attractive place to go. We just don't know. And I think we need that information in order to put out a meaningful RFP and gauge how much, you know, where's. In, what I'd like to see is that we do what is necessary to make the building stable, secure. And come up with a lease arrangement or sale with a very strict preservation requirement. And maybe a, you know, a reverting requirement back to the town if that doesn't work out. But rehabbing the building and make it useful and productive could be part of an investment by the leaseholder or the purchaser. That building was allowed to fall into such disrepair by the MBTA. That we don't know what that point is on the building. And I think what the RFI tells us was we've got, you know, very poor response of people who are interested. I think in part because they look at a building and they say, what's the town going to do or not? So we need some direction. The worst thing happens for this is we get somebody come back and say, you don't really need this, you need that. But right now we have nothing.
Dr. Grim, if, I know that the chairman officer, Ms. Brutini, has a lot of colleagues around the state. If possible, could we reach out to some other communities that have done this? I know there's other train depots that have, that may have been municipally owned and then sold or leased. There's a, of municipally owned sites that have been turned over for commercial use. She might have a sense from her colleagues as to the process they went through. And if they have any information on potential consultants or, like I said, that's sort of commercial broker type or market, market analysis group that could. Invite us with quotes or estimates on the cost of that.
Yep, I will speak with her. She was supposed to pop on, something may have happened, but I will. Talk to her.
Any other thoughts on the Train Depot for tonight? Robin, do you happen, Dr. Grim, do you happen to have an update on the work Mr. Jafun is doing on the site? In terms of timeline update?
Nothing more than what we've already been doing. Yeah, nothing more than. What we've already been doing is just shoring up the critical aspects. Let's just continue along.
We'll continue to monitor this and keep on plugging along. Hopefully get something active in the site.
Paul's actually on, yep.
Paul, do you want to just give us a brief update on the work that's on a potential timeline for how that, when that will be completed?
As, as we discussed, I think it was, I think you guys voted on the fifth to allow us to enter the license agreement. So we submitted that license application late last week. And then all we heard back from them is it could be a 60 to 90 day review. We don't think it's going to be that long. We think it'll be more like 30, but no promises. So we're kind of. In a holding pattern right now.
In which?
But the license application has been submitted.
To the MBTA?
Correct.
16 to 90 days, that's a. Quite a long time. All right. Hopefully we'll see some movement prior to then. Great. All right, thank you. Any additional questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item number 10, the consent agenda. We have two items tonight. Item A is to approve acceptance from the Tufts Health Plan Foundation of donation for the Council on Aging, the amount $5,000 FY21. And item B is to approve any payroll and bill warrants and any other documents to come before the meeting. I believe Ms. Bruce has called in, so I'm going to pull item A, allow her to give a little presentation on that. Does anyone want to pull any other items from the consent agenda? Okay. All right.
Go ahead, Ms. K. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't be very long. This is actually a grant that was accepted last year for $5,000 for the first year for the Council on Aging. It's part of a Tufts grant, their health foundation. We partnered with the Y and about five other COAs on this award of money. And it's for three years that we can move forward. So this is the second year. The first year we spent, we were working on programming. It's to engage seniors in Stoughton to see where they feel they have some unmet needs. Unfortunately, midway, as you know, we ended up going into a period of the COA being shut down due to COVID. And we were very fortunate to have that $5,000 we used. We used it for, um, food insecurities and delivering of, uh, food to people. And we've been buying food and gift cards. The second year, we expect maybe probably the same, but, um, it certainly was helpful for our seniors and for people that, um, were experienced in difficult times. So, um, we'll get another $5,000 this year. If anyone has any comments or questions.
Great, thank you. We appreciate your work on this and, um, being able to activate that funding and get additional funding for FY21. So that'll be very helpful and put to good use. Um, are you intending to use it for, um, similar purposes in FY21?
Yes, we were very lucky that the, um, Health Foundation gave us flexibility because it was very structured with, we had, um, started off with listening sessions, identifying, um, getting seniors together to identify areas that they felt, that they were missing some, um, health opportunities or areas that we could, um, try to do some programming. And we were all excited. We got a community advisory board together and then, um, COVID hit. So it kind of, uh, you know, definitely we rooted our plans, but it actually came in very handy at this time because of the problems with people accessing food and when people were afraid to go to grocery stores. And it also allowed us not to be tapping into our, um, food pantries around the town. It was like additional food because we know a lot of families need, um, to be able to get those supplies. So I would just also like to say if anybody does hear of anybody that is having problems, um, you know, accessing food or whatever, please call over to the COA or call the Public Health Office. And we'll certainly try to, to get, um, them some help. Um, I know we've definitely, um, had some families during this time that have needed help and sometimes your grandparents taking care of grandchildren. So it's great that we've got this opportunity, um, to access these funds. So we would love it if we could do programming, but we don't have complete, um, actual programs. We're going to start maybe some virtual programs, but, you know, we'll just take it one day at a time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of the board? There are a motion for item A.
I move the, to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda made and seconded. On the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we have, uh, multiple items here on the executive session. Get them all up. Executive session, uh, item A is consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property pursuant to general on chapter 30A, section 21A6 for the property at 1515 West Street. It'll be 24.6 acres on the assessor's map, 3615. Item B, strategy with respect to litigation pursuant to general on chapter 30A, section 21A3, Town Stoughton versus Sullivan et al., um, SUCV 14-244H. Um, item C, consider the purchase, purchase, change lease or value of real property pursuant to general on chapter 30A, section 21A6 for 31 Porous Street. Item D is to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to general on chapter 30A, section 21A2 with the town manager. And item E is to approve executive session minutes of August 4th, 2020. And for finding that it is detrimental to the town's litigating and negotiating positions to discuss these items in open session and we have money discussed in executive session. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So made. Second.
All right. On the motion made in second, any additional discussion? Okay. Enter into executive session, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
I vote yes. And we'll enter into executive session and we will adjourn from the executive session. Uh, so this will conclude our open session, uh, planning to meet, uh, next Thursday, August 27th. So thank you all for your participation tonight and we'll see you next week.